Wait, can you check and see if we're rolling?
Good evening. The regular city council meeting for October 19, 2017 is called to order at 7:32. Madam Clerk, the pledge please.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Roll call. Councilman Baudier. He's absent. Councilman Benton.
Here.
Councilman Hewitt.
Um, Councilman Hewitt's unable to attend today. She did try to reschedule the meeting so she can be present, but that request was denied.
Okay. Councilman Johnston.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Mayor Misselli.
Present.
Police Chief Walker.
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer.
Present.
City Attorney Bures is absent tonight, and City CPA Linda Lulu is absent. Municipal Clerk Nicole Lee, present.
Thank you very much. We just celebrated Veterans Day as mayor, and personally, I'd like to extend a thank you to all our veterans, past and present, who have served our country admirably. So I'd like to make sure that we all always remember them on Veterans Day and every day, because every day really should be Veterans Day. So I'd like to extend our appreciation and thanks. We have more good news about how bright our children are in our city. Recently, a nice young man in our city, Bruce Miller, who is the son of Nicole and Bruce Miller, achieved a perfect score on his ACT. I think we should... Harahan keeps putting out some phenomenal scholars and also some athletes, as you'll be seeing later on in a few minutes. Bruce attends Saint Martin's Episcopal School, and we're very proud of his accomplishment, and we look forward to see what he plans on doing in the future. I attended the Saint Rita Festival this past weekend. I believe a lot of people did. It went beautifully. I'd like to thank all our first responders and everyone who supported the festival, supported the school, and supported the city in their attendance. It was a wonderful time by everyone. I wanted to make an announcement. Next Thursday is Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving. There will be no pickup of garbage on Thursday, Thanksgiving. Anyone who usually has pickup on that Thursday will receive pickup on Wednesday instead. It will, it is posted on the city's website as a reminder. So we want to just make sure that everybody gets word of that change.
Tina, is it on the marquee outside?
We can ask about the marquee. Nicole, would you just mind ask, ask Mr. Edwin to put that on the marquee? Thank you. Because if I just write it down, it's not going to... Right. I'd also like to announce that the city is working with NOLA Church in order to deliver Thanksgiving dinners the night before Thanksgiving. We're trying to identify any needy families, shut-ins, elderly, who would appreciate this service. Please contact City Hall. You can contact us through the web, the website, report a concern, and tell us of a family, and we will put them on our list. We're trying to get our numbers together about how many meals to prepare. So anyone who has a family or a person that needs it, and, you know, if they're close enough to the city, also, we can extend a meal to someone close by as well.
Mayor, I would be happy to help in that endeavor. If you give me a call, I'd be happy to...
Aw, thank you very much.
Whatever's needed.
Actually, I'm just going to ask you to get with Darlene, who's trying to coordinate it.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And it's really nice. Thank you. We will now do special presentations. I always get excited when the children of Harahan are here. They are a great joy to all of us. I'm going to let the coaches proceed. I think we've got the JPRD undefeated 10-and-under Babe Ruth East Bank Champs 2017 with us. So we're going to talk about the... What?
I think the 12-and-unders first, yeah.
Right. We're going to do all of them, but I think we'll do them first. So the coaches, would you like to come up for the undefeated? No?
About the 12-and-under? I think they had practice or something tonight.
Oh, they not here?
No, they're here. The 12-and-under. Do y'all have practice tonight? Y'all have...
You want to do the 12-and-under first?
(inaudible).
Who's got practice tonight?
Yeah, that's why we're doing the 12-and-under first.
Oh, okay. So thank you for helping us get that in. So we'll start with the JPRD 12-and-under Babe Ruth East Bank Champs for 2017. Want to introduce yourself and do a little bragging?
Well, my name is Eric Seconder. I helped coach the 12-U, 11-U Babe Ruth softball 2017 championship team. But first, I'd like to say thank you for your support, and I'd like to congratulate these young ladies for winning this season. Our first, our first member of the team, Ms. Brennan Mitchell.
This is when I feel old, because I knew them when they were babies.
Ms. Lauren Seconder. Ms. Michaela Lesko. Ms. Madeline Rose. Ms. Nadalyn Bonvillian. Ms. Destiny Linton. Ms. Abby St. Seer. Ms. Caitlin Lyons. Ms. Olivia Ionetta. And Ms. Emma Ruddy. That's the 2017 Babe Ruth East Bank Champions.
Coaches, family members, it's a lot of work to get to this level, and it's hard to make sure that homework gets done, meals get done, getting to practices, and thanks for your volunteerism. It's very, very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
That was these, right? I should have handed these out.
You should have probably handed them out as you went.
Why, we should have handed them out as you went?
They're in order.
We'll do it the next...
Are they in order?
They are. Yeah, they're in order.
That's official recognition from the city stating what a good job y'all did. Okay, ladies, did we get everybody on camera?
Oh, a few of them weren't there. That was the problem. I said they weren't one, but a few of them weren't there.
Yeah.
They figured it all out.
Yeah. Good job, girls. Good job.
Okay.
12-and-under? Moving on.
Good job, girls.
12-and-under, next 12-and-under.
Okay, now we're going to go on to our next presentation of JPRD undefeated 12-and-under volleyball East Bank Champs 2017. This is no easy feat to get these accomplishments. And this time, we can give out the...
Yeah, I'm new at it.
I know. So does... You'll invite them out?
Okay, this is...
(laughing)
This is the 2017 East Bank Girls Volleyball Champions. And I'd like to congratulate these girls for winning also. Our first member is Ms. Michaela Jane. Ms. Ella Mitchell. Ms. Michaela Lesko. Ms. Alyssa McDuffie. Ms. Colleen O'Connor. Ms. Bailey Nelson. Ms. Rachel Nullet. Ms. Gabby Perry. Ms. Demi Catalano. Ms. Kaylee Rocha.
So I think all of us could be a nice round of applause. Congratulations, ladies. Again, congratulations, Coach, family members. Ladies, you've done a great job. Thank you for representing our city, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to what I announced first. The JPRD undefeated 10-and-under Babe Ruth East Bank Champs for 2017.
So on behalf of the coaches, myself, Michelle Connect, Julie Connect, Dawn Benoit, and Randy DeLaat, want to congratulate all these girls for all their hard work in being the undefeated Babe Ruth 9-10 All-Star Champs. So first, we'll start with Sophia DiVinceni. Rachel Zamjan, who was also selected to play on the JPRD East Bank All-Star Team.
Very good.
Olivia Bourgeois.
I hope these injuries weren't sustained in the championship game, right?
Playing ball. And Ella Mitchell, who was also selected to play for the JPRD East Bank All-Star Team.
So families, again, coaches, everyone who supports these ladies in their endeavors, thank you, and thank you for representing the city. We're very, very proud of you. We'll give them a moment so that they can move in and out. Correct the roll call. Yeah, we'll get him on at 7:49. The city attorney has graciously come, even though he is not well. So thank you. He's going to stay as long as he can.
I had two babies.
Darlene Schwartz, our community liaison.
All right, folks, I was going one way up a wrong way getting in here just now, so sorry about that. So we've got a few announcements tonight. Some of them relating to Christmas, some of them relating to Thanksgiving, so let's get on with it. Let's start with this first, tax bills. So I don't know about where you all live, but where I live, the post office tends to be pretty, pretty bad. I don't like to be critical of that kind of stuff, but it's really bad. So please be aware that the city clerk and I today had a discussion, and the intentions are to have the tax bills mailed by the end of November. So come early December, if you're not seeing your tax bills, you know, it's not going to be come January 1st, January 5th, and interest starts to accrue, which is a waste of money. Please call us so we can make sure we can get a copy to you. Please help, please help get the word out on that.
Payments will also be able to be made online so that it's easier to get payments in. You won't have to worry about the mail getting to us, and it's more timely, too, and convenient.
Right. And so, again, be on the lookout for it. Last year, New Year's Eve, I was at the office here processing tax payments to make sure that those things got in before the clock turned midnight. So they got a crack in City Hall's door. You can put the bill, the payment, the envelope, whatever, through there. We will get them processed, okay, folks? So that will be, again, start looking for them, I would say, the first week of December. Postmark, yep, thank you. We do accept the postmark on the envelope. You get a postmark before the end of December. We will accept that as being timely. Okay, so we got that. Christmas parade, I'm kind of not in order here, but we'll get the information out there. The Christmas parade this year will be on Saturday, December 16. Tracy with the Police Department will be handling anyone that wants to be in the parade, marching clubs, things of that nature. So contact her, 737-9436. And, yeah, and then you can make arrangements to be in the parade and participate if you choose to do so. Again, Saturday, December 16.
December 16.
16, December 1/6, yes, ma'am.
At what time?
Noon.
Noon is the start time. It'll come down the traditional route, starting around where that Crescent Ford place is on Jefferson Highway, and proceed and disband down where, when Dixie is, by Fols. Backing up a little bit, Saturday, December 2, at the Harahan Gym, breakfast with Santa. $10 per child. Get you food, get you a pitcher with Santa. They will have reindeer, and they'll have five craft booths with items available. Was speaking with the mayor, and $10 is not a whole lot, but for some families with multiple kids, it could be a burden. So if you or you know of someone that has children that would like to attend this event, give us a call at City Hall, and the mayor or someone else will be happy to provide a sponsor for the kids to make sure they don't miss out on this. I mean, it's a nice time of year. Let's make sure as many kids as we can can have to come to participate with that. So again, that's Saturday, December 2, to Harahan Gym. Doors will open at 8:45 a.m., and then from 9:30 to 10:30, they're going to have the reindeer and lots of fun for the kids. So please help us make that a successful event. Last month, I made an announcement about the recycle bin, and someone from out there in the audience questioned about whether or not glass was acceptable. So contacted Romelli and also went and read the information that is on there. Bottom line is, I could quote all the stuff that I wrote down, what's accepted, what isn't accepted. Glass is not accepted. Please don't put glass out there. Yes, ma'am?
Target recycles glass. I'm writing all my glass to Target.
Okay, there you go. There's a Target, a Clearview Shopping Center, and Esplanade Mall, so they do accept glass for recycling. We do not. I went out there yesterday, and it was wine bottles and beer bottles, and somebody celebrating something, I guess. But please, please don't leave that out there, because we're going to wind up with flat tires and pets running around, and who knows who, somebody's going to get hurt by broken glass. So no glass at the recycle bins. Household hazardous materials event. This is across the river, at 100 Huey P. Long Avenue, from 9 a.m. to noon on, of course, me, I got to look at this little writing here, Saturday, November 18, 9 o'clock a.m. to noon. This is by the Second Parish Court on Derby Street, across the river. They will accept household hazardous materials, which includes paint, bug killers, household cleaning products, chemicals, lighting components, et cetera, electronic waste. So if anybody has any of that and wants to venture across the river, again, that'll be at 100 Huey P. Long Avenue. And then we have Thanksgiving and Thanksgiving meals. We have NOLA Church, who helped us with Royland Park, is going to be sponsoring some turkey meals for the seniors and needy families. I'm in the process of compiling a list so they know how much food to buy. Now, I've reached out to a number of people who are involved in the city of Harahan, over at the senior center, and the food bank, and Saint Rita, and a few other locations to get some lists. Harahan Elementary School. If anybody knows anyone, please have them give me a call so we can make sure we get people on the list. Transportation will be provided to the location for the meals, and it will be Wednesday night. I'm waiting on getting the final time from the folks, but please give me a call.
Darlene?
Yes, ma'am.
Also, Chief St. Seer made a wonderful offer. If you would... I don't, I don't need to speak for you.
Any help you need, please call me, and I'd be happy to come and give you a hand.
Okay, all right. We can give them some rods and a fire truck, maybe.
That's right. Ding ding.
Don't know if I can offer that, but I can give you a hand.
And maybe Tim can give us a police car, and we'll chauffeur some in a police car, without handcuffs, of course. And last, I know y'all got a long list of stuff, and I'm rambling on here. So last but not least, Father John, everybody remembers Father John from Saint Rita, and I'll try not to tear up here. Father John's 50th birthday would be coming up. And so the Notre Dame Seminary is going to be having a birthday celebration for him. Ms. Wheeler, Councilman, Councilwoman Wheeler, was nice enough to make some extra copies. I'll leave them out there. There's various levels of sponsorships. They're going to hold an event Sunday, November 26, Rockin' Bowl on South Carrollton Avenue in New Orleans from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. They're looking for donations of baskets or whatever also, and again, anything from $25 on up to $5,000, and a lot of stuff in between. Get you tickets to get in, and also sponsorships for Father John. And it's going to benefit Notre Dame Seminary, where his assignment was after he left here at Saint Rita's. If anybody has any questions, I don't have any other information other than that. Either give me a call at City Hall or Councilman Wheeler.
Just give out the number, kids.
And City Hall is 737-6383, 737-6383.
Or they can contact through the website also.
That's, okay.
Report a concern is another way to get in touch with us.
Okay, all right. There you go. And then...
Yeah, and if anybody would like to contact me on my cell, it's 504-450-5484. And all the money raised, they have a fund that's set up specifically for Father John, for the members at the seminary, so...
Okay. All right, folks, that's it. Give us a call for any, like I said, Thanksgiving or, and/or Christmas people that might be in need for something. We want to make this, make it good for them. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Chief?
Tim Walker, Harahan Police Department. Mayor, Council, viewing public. Got a few things tonight to go over. If you were following, in the last year, we had some problems with our auditor, Carl Riggs and Ingram. And I've sent an email to the mayor and the council requesting that we obtain a new auditor for the city of Harahan. Some reasons for it. When two of our council members, Wheeler and Baudier, met with CRI earlier this year, they said, number one, they would not meet with me or the Police Department to discuss the audit. Well, if they're not going to meet with me to do the audit, why do we need them? They would not come to a council meeting to discuss the audit. They went on and said that the narrative that was placed in the audit was produced by the mayor and Ms. Lulu. You know, I think, I thought the audit should be actual and factual, but apparently not. When the audit was submitted, learned that we were over budget, the Police Department, by $66,000. After we received that, we sent documentation in to Carl Riggs and Ingram, and also to Ms. Lulu, our city finance director. And the next day, CRI came back and said, no, the Police Department's under budget, $91,927. A day or two after that, Ms. Lulu came back and said, no, the Police Department's under budget, $75,621. However, they still put the audit into the legislative auditor that the Police Department was over budget, $66,000. So with that, I really think that we need to look to find a new auditor. They're not fair. They said they're not going to meet with us. I have some problems with it, and I think the council should have some problems with it also. And you, too, mayor. Do you want to discuss it, or you...
I'll discuss it at the end.
Halloween. It was very successful this year. We believe it is one of the largest turnouts ever. We estimate 4,500 to 5,000 people showed up that night. Remember, the population in Harahan is a little over 9,300. Obviously, people that showed up, the majority of them were not Harahan residents. And the policemen on each corner are provided by our reserve section. Now, some people think we don't need a reserve, but I guarantee you, the 16 officers that were out there that night, they would be pandemonium. There's people out celebrating from all over, they drinking, having a good time, but if without a police presence, that would be a problem. I worked Bourbon Street during Mardi Gras a number of years, and I guarantee you, if there's not a police presence, you have a serious problem. Mayor had mentioned before, sent you some emails, they were upgrading our speed of our internet for the Police Department to 100 megabytes. Right now, the whole city uses 10 megabytes. We purchasing, we paying for it. We've met with the city's IT people, and they agree that the service should be over in the Police Department and shared with the rest of the city. I just need an answer if y'all are going to come over or not. If not, I need to buy a new router and go forth with it.
I'd like to talk to you. There's some issues that we have identified that we need to talk about.
Issues? I mean, I've met with Digicom, my city...
Yeah, we need to have a conversation and talk about it.
When will we hear that? Can we do it now?
No, not now. We're going to do it after we get through all the business, and you can, we can meet on a regular day and talk about it.
Yeah, just like the day, well... Yeah, Ed goes into it also. Yeah, that goes into it also, we'll meet with. Back in August, you said we can meet to see about having the police department have access to read only of the city financials. I sent you an email the following day, you replied saying that we needed to meet separately. I replied back that, no, we're not meet with you alone. If you had any other business, city business, send me an email in regards to it, but I'd still like my secretary, Ms. Whittle, and myself to meet with you and Ms. Linda Lulu about getting us access. You've never replied to that, so I assume that'll never happen. And the reason being, folks, the financial records for the city are public record. I believe if we would have had access to it before, we'd have discovered that for most a year or better, the police department was charged over $21,000 in health insurance premiums for four former employees. We have one officer that just came back from military leave. He spent over three months overseas. By law, we need to pay him two weeks' military leave. All of our personnel, unless I submit a signed payroll sheet, they are not paid. City Hall was informed that this officer is on military leave, he's out of the country, not to be paid. He received the paycheck the entire three months. Now we're trying to get City Hall to give us a figure so this man can return the funds to the city and we can't get a response. I don't know. It just seems like the mayor and Ms. Lulu, our finance director, have done everything they can to disrupt the operation of the police department. We spend more time justifying our existence than anything else. You know, back in May, I submitted seven, eight public records requests. One recently, we just received, to find out that the police department has been charged for Ms. Linda Lulu, our city finance director, for our city attorney, and for CRI without my authorization. So we asked for the itemized statements. Going through some of them, we learned that the police department was charged $700 something dollars for Mr. Bures to be at a council meeting. I mean, why should the police department pay for that?
That was corrected when you brought it to our attention.
But if we would have had access before, in a bill where it came to us, like everything else, nothing is paid for the police department, whether it's payroll, invoices, purchase orders, they are all signed by me. They took it upon themselves, the mayor and Ms. Lulu, to take bills for these three, CRI, the city auditor, Ms. Lulu, and the city attorney, and just arbitrarily billed the police department. I have some questions about that. Some of the bills are not ours. Everything else that I apply for, I have to sign for, or it's not paid. Why are these three exceptions? You know, just nothing came up that night. We had a budget hearing a couple of nights ago and obviously nothing was handled. But several people in the community, myself included, we purchased shirts for the employees in maintenance. They were donated to the employees. Then I got a call the other day from our city maintenance director that Ms. Lulu, our finance director, $105 an hour, paid over $144,000 this year and will probably surpass that this year, even though she's budgeted $48,000. She needs the receipt for this in order to catalog it in the finances. They were donated to the employees. I mean, a couple of months ago, I bought a hose bill, a faucet for the police department. Do I have to include that? That needs to be a budget amendment? I mean, this is crazy, the way it's going on, where this bill keeps being run up for our city finance director. $144,000, yet tax dollars, for somebody that was allocated $48,000 and will probably surpass that this year. $105 an hour. Ms. Lulu's not here tonight, but I had a question for her. Ask her later. The budget. I submitted a copy to each one of the council members, our proposed budget for 2018. If y'all have any questions, please contact me. I'd be more than happy to go through it with you. It's another question of Ms. Lulu. She's not here, so I'll address that next time. Okay. The blue light program. We're doing it again starting Friday, the day after Halloween. We'll have several units in there during the day.
After Thanksgiving.
After Thanksgiving, the Friday after Thanksgiving. I'm sorry. There'll be a couple of units during the day, both marked and unmarked. The marked units will have their blue lights flashing. They'll ride through the neighborhoods. It's used to prevent crime. It's apparently been successful in the past. If you've been shopping and you come home and you feel uneasy, call a station, 737-9763. Somebody can escort you to the house. But anytime you feel that something's not right suspicious, you're our eyes and ears. Don't hesitate to call either 911, which we work off Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office 911 system, or the police station direct, and we're coming out. Again, you're our eyes and ears. Also, hope y'all have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Address the council. Anyone wishing to come up to address the council, we're going to ask you to come to the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address and let me get our timer if you don't mind. Mr. Chaddeling?
Eric Chaddeling, 700 Colonial Club Drive. First off, I'd like to thank everybody who came out and helped at Jambalaya Cook-Off. Very huge success. Weather was great. We had a huge car turnout, biggest turnout ever. We had over 150 cars. We had over 22 cooking teams. We had some really good jambalaya. It went really quick. We had a great time. We look forward to doing it again next year. Everyone who participated, I appreciate it. Believe Fire Department won a city cup again. So I think they've been carrying that for the last three years, four years, since we started it. Police need to step up. The Harahan Athletic Association, also, I'm going to see if the mayor allows to leave some forms in the back. We contribute a lot to the playground. We help buy, the money raised, we use that to buy pizzas, trophies. I believe we just ordered picnic tables, handicap picnic tables. I believe Stu's going to show us, you know, we're going to get them installed. Wade'd like them installed. And, but on the same note, there's other capital projects that need to be done at the playground. I believe we still have air condition's not working. I know they did just purchase some new equipment to work on the floor, which the floor looks excellent. So whoever did the floor did a great job. I feel the playground is declining in participants. We have baseball, they started some new baseball programs. A lot of kids play all this travel ball, which affects us a lot. So the kids are playing ball all year long, so they're not back at the playground playing as much. They started flag football league, so we don't have to tackle football as much. But we still need people to contribute, come out, support the playground. It's very nice atmosphere still, a lot of nice people there. People want to come out, help. They could sit in the concession stand, open a concession stand. We appreciate everything y'all do.
Mr. Chaddeling, if you give Nicole a copy of the flyer, Nicole, would you make sure that gets on? Thank you.
All right. And Ms. Darlene talked about breakfast with Santa. It's from 9:00 to 11:30 on December 2nd. It's a really great time. I know when my kids were younger, they loved it. They still want to go. Fortunately, we're going to be out of town, I think, but if we're in town, they're 11 and 12 and they'll still, they'll still be there. It's really a good time. They do have live reindeer and we look forward to seeing people there. Same thing like the mayor and Ms. Darlene said, if someone, y'all know someone who can't afford it, if you contact anybody, I mean, we're going to get them in. Somebody's going to fund that money, I promise. Also wanted to make, on another note, two streetlights on Colonial Club Drive. I live at 700 Colonial Club Drive. The streetlight on the right of my house is out and the streetlight on the left of my house is out. I've made phone calls and I want to say, they came one time and fixed it, but it only lasted a day. All right? Thank you all.
All right.
Ma' Jean Kaznav, 46 Oak Avenue, Harahan, Louisiana. I'd like to talk about recycling. I am against paying for recycling because I don't recycle. And since only about 30% of the people are recycling, why should the rest of us pay for it? I don't think you should make us pay for anything without a vote of the people. I was in a hospital last month and I think I missed the meeting at the senior center that Ms. Wheeler said she was setting up. I'd like to know what was decided at that meeting.
Ma'am, that meeting was never scheduled. I announced it at the last meeting.
Well, she wasn't.
Oh.
We're still working on it.
So I reached out to Paige, the mayor's assistant, to get some dates, to have a meeting at the town hall before this meeting. The days that were available did not work with everybody that was able to attend between the fair setup and some other meetings. So I have reached out to Paige again. She gave me a list of some days, says there's actually more availability in December. So we're working on, so the meeting never occurred, the town hall meeting never occurred. So we've got more availability in December. We're going to schedule a date and time. We will announce it. We'll put it on the marquee, social media. We'll announce to everybody. So the town hall meeting was never held. But we will let you know for sure when it will be.
Okay, thank you.
We do know it'll be at the senior center, so I can tell you that. And probably maybe 6:30, 7:00, around the time to give people a chance to get home and get settled.
Okay, thank you.
We hope you're feeling better.
Yes.
Hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Glad you're out of the hospital, dear.
John Ream, Three Rent Pass. Have a report on Wood Materials. They made a commitment to the DEQ, the East Jefferson Levy District, the Southeastern Louisiana Flood Protection Authority East, and the city of Harahan and its residents, and the New Orleans Business District, New Orleans City Business Newspaper, to run a new haul road along the river and retire the old haul road running adjacent and parallel to the levee from Hickory to Bailey. Wood Materials has a phone conference with DEQ on December 14th, 2017, at 9:30 a.m. to continue settlement negotiations regarding their compliance orders, notice of potential penalties. We gave y'all a copy of these papers and maybe we can be able to listen in on Wood Materials talking to the DEQ and trying to work something out, a settlement. Wood Materials has stated, has started preparation for new haul road along the river according to aerial pictures on November 3rd, 2017, and started laying some sections of cement behind Pit 2 along the river according to aerial pictures on November 14th, 2017. It is good that work has begun, but at this pace, it is very unlikely that they will finish the new haul road along the river and retire the old haul road before December 14th, 2017, phone conference with DEQ. The DEQ should not agree on a settlement negotiation with Wood Materials until Wood Materials completes their commitments and new haul road and retire old haul road. We are asking that the mayor and the city attorney, the city council, and us as representatives of the residents to make a request to DEQ to be in the phone conference on December 14th, 2017, to see what goes on there. In 1984, Wood tried to make a barge unloading facility in Harahan against the zoning ordinance. Wood sued Harahan. Harahan went to court and won. Now Wood is violating our zoning ordinance again. Wood Materials is daily breaking the Harahan zoning ordinance by mulching and composting and accepting tree debris and waste. Harahan is back in court again. When Harahan wins, these are the enforcement and penalties. Section C, the penalty, upon any conviction under this ordinance, the offender shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $500. But Section B states, under violations, each and every day that such violation exists shall constitute a separate violation. So these numbers are adding up and Harahan deserves to get this money.
I had fun playing with the number in my head.
Okay? And we could use that money. So, but everybody needs to get involved and put Harahan first and let's get this done.
Thank you.
Hold on, just a moment. Mr. Ream and Mrs. Ream, I'd like to invite you to be on that telephone conference with me.
Oh, thank you.
And invite any citizen who would like to participate. If we know a number that are coming, we could even plug in the phone in the council chambers if we need it.
Thank you so much. And we can even put tape across our mouth, you know?
We'll mute.
If you tell us to.
We can hear and we can mute it.
Thank you. That is highly appreciated. Thank you very much, Ma'am Sally. I'm sorry, Ellen Ream. Wood Materials illegal tree dumping, mulching and compost is not a permitted use under Harahan zoning ordinance and line 6 states no manufacturing shall be done on site. Monday through Saturday, many tree companies are paying Wood Materials to dump tree debris illegally on the San Batch in Harahan and contributing to Wood Materials daily breaking the Harahan zoning ordinance. We suggest all tree companies to stop paying to dump on the Batch in Harahan and support the city of Harahan zoning law and its residents that are greatly affected by this large illegal facility. If you hire a tree company, please ask where they dump their tree debris. Jefferson Parish stopped their corporate endeavor agreement with Wood Materials and stopped dumping trees on Harahan Batch. Aerial pics show how huge this facility is. Wood Materials is illegally manufacturing every day against the Harahan Batch law and then transporting illegal bags of compost to Delta Sod on Central Avenue in Jefferson Parish to sell to customers. We suggest to the residents, do not purchase this illegal compost from Delta Sod. Residents along the Batch are getting sinus infections from this illegal facility and having to pay the cost of doctors and medication. In 2010, then-mayor Paul Johnson told Pierce Wood, the president of Wood Materials, that mulching and compost on Harahan Batch was against the Harahan Batch zoning ordinance. So Pierce Wood knew, before bringing the compost and mulch on the Batch in Harahan, that it was against the Batch law, but brought it in anyway. According to the aerial pictures taken, Wood Materials compost and mulch operation in Pits 5 and 6 has expanded to an enormous size. That pit goes from Bailey all the way down to Haraleen's. Thank you. And it will take over Pit 7 if the city does not stop this in a full trial. The mayor, the city attorney, and the city council need to come together to support, the support of the full trial against Wood Materials illegal compost and mulch facility. Attorney Bures, can you please explain what happened at the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals? Look, I can't even say it right. I'm not going to explain it. Just a short, so that everybody can know what happened.
Okay. Injunction actions have three components: temporary restraining orders, preliminary injunctions, and permanent injunction. So when you, when you go to stop somebody, you want them to stop doing whatever it is that they're doing that you think is illegal or otherwise violates property rights, you can go to the judge and ask for a TRO, Temporary Restraining Order. And that's done with minimal notice to the other side and with no testimony taken. You just show up in front of the judge and the judge makes a snap decision to keep the status quo in place, stop somebody from doing something or make them stop doing something they're doing. A TRO is only good for 10 days. The judge has to set the matter for a preliminary injunction so that he can take more evidence. Now, usually in preliminary injunctions, there's no live testimony. All you do is you submit affidavits, the judge makes a decision as to whether, and in our case, it's whether the law says what it says and means what it says or it doesn't. So we asked first for a preliminary injunction. There was no point in a TRO because this has been going on for years and years. So we asked for preliminary injunction. Wood Materials filed an exception. They said, you don't even have a right to sue for this, Harahan, because it's outside of five years. You only had, at the most, five years. We think you only had three years, but at the most, you only had five and you didn't do it within five years. The trial judge, you know, when they filed their exception, they filed documents, we had documents attached to our preliminary injunction. The trial judge said she wasn't going to rule on the prescription issue and ruled against the city of Harahan. I asked for written reasons. Said, tell us why you did that. And lo and behold, when we get the written reasons, it was all about prescription. We appealed it. You were there at the Court of Appeals hearing. We go, both sides write briefs, we oral, you know, we do an oral argument and at the end of the, of Wood Materials' oral argument, Judge Johnson asked the Wood Materials lawyer, Etienne Ballard, "Well, how'd these documents get in the record? You didn't move for introduction of the documents. You were caught both Ballard and I by surprise." I got to tell you, we were, we were shocked by that. Because neither of us had an objection to the other one's documents. We, you know, put in what you want to put in. We think our documents are the correct ones, you think yours are the correct ones. So we were both kind of surprised by that and I think, for those of you who were there at the hearing, you know, I said, Judge, I have no objection to his exhibits, he has no objection to mine, because both Ballard and I wanted the case decided. So when we get the decision, the Fifth Circuit says, well, you didn't formally move to introduce these exhibits and the trial judge shouldn't have paid any attention to them whatsoever. So we're sending the whole thing... So we're sending the whole thing back to the district court. Well, when Mr. Ballard got that, he called me up, and he, he didn't know what to make of it, and I didn't know what to make of it. But sometimes judges try to telegraph to you what they want you, how they want the case to proceed. And the, the telegraph that I got from what the Fifth Circuit has said was, "We want you guys," because there's obviously a conflict between the affidavits. We have Mayor Johnson saying one thing, Mayor Mosca saying a different thing about when this project, process started out here, who gave permission for it. So obviously, the, the Fifth Circuit's looking at these affidavits and going, "Well, we can't make a decision on the basis of just the bare paperwork. We're going to need to have a full trial." And that's what a permanent injunction hearing is about. A permanent injunction is when you come into court and you put on evidence, you put on the witnesses, and the judge determines that the injunction will either be granted and be granted in perpetuity, or it will be denied. So I think what the Fifth Circuit was telling all of us, including the trial judge, was, "Go back, put on a full trial of this, bring us a complete record so that we know exactly what was going on." So the trial judge, we need to get a date from her, because this is going to take at least a day to try. We figure there's going to be enough witnesses to, and you, you just, you know, getting trial dates in the district court, they have very busy schedules, and of course, in Jefferson, it's both a criminal and civil jurisdiction, so they're even busier. So Mr. Ballard called me last week, he said he had passed by the, the court's chambers the week before and discussed it with him and about which way we would want to go on this, and told him that we might be coming in to ask for a trial date. I called him yesterday, said, "Let's call the court and get a date, we haven't gotten together yet, but that's the next step." I anticipate that the judge can probably work us in sometime in January, so that will be when we will go and do the, the permanent injunction, and then we'll try the entire thing, both the prescription issue and the city's entitlement to have this operation stopped out there on the Batchery. Now, as I mentioned to the, to the Fifth Circuit, there's a, you know, the, the law on this is unsettled, whether it's three years or five years. I think that the statute is very clear that the city of Harahan has a five-year prescriptive period, so that the prescription on this case would have run from the best I can tell, because Mayor Johnson told them they couldn't do it. They got their permits in late twenty-eleven, and they didn't start the composting until twenty-twelve. I think we're timely in the filing of, if it's the five years, and I'm, I'm pretty convinced it's a five-year prescriptive period. It's a three-year prescriptive period, it's kind of iffy, because certainly they were composting and there was storm debris being taken out there since, what, when was Isaac? Twenty-twelve? Twenty, I think that's what, and the city did assent to that. Mayor Mosca let them go out there and do that, that composting. Now, he says now that, well, I only, we, I saw some newspaper reports that the Reams dug up, where Mayor Mosca said, "Well, I didn't tell them they could do it in perpetuity, they just kept doing it." As I told the Fifth Circuit, in the Fourth Circuit, there's some case law to the effect that, okay, if you become a non-conforming use, in other words, you did something against the zoning law, but the time period's run on it, and now you're grandfathered in, you get your non-conforming status, so we can't shut you down, but you can't expand it. You can't make it larger than it was. And I think that case involved a, a facility in New Orleans that was being used as a reception facility, and then they bought a property next door and made it larger, and said, "Oh, we've been grandfathered in because we're a non-conforming use." Of course, that's great, but that's a non-conforming use for you one building. You can't go buy more buildings and expand your non-conforming use. So that's an argument that can be used in the Wood Materials case if they prevail on the prescription argument. Well, that prescription wasn't a one-day thing, it keeps running. So you might have, you might have gotten your prescription for your two baby piles, remember they said that in one of their articles, the two baby piles? But now, and Ms. Ream has shown me these, these aerial photographs, that operation is enormous. I mean, it's, it's acres of compost. So, you know, when did that prescriptive period, where did that five-year rolling period end, or that three-year rolling period? At that three-year rolling period, that's your cutoff, you couldn't have gone beyond it, knock it back. So those are some of the legal issues that are involved in it, but I feel, I feel pretty confident from what I've seen from the records on this and from the way the statute is written, that if there's a five-year prescriptive period, we were within the prescriptive period ensuing to, to stop this, this use out there. And the use clearly is not provided for in the zoning code. It's, it's not something they can be doing on that Batchery. And they were told that by Mayor Paul Johnson. They were told that point-blank, and I can't wait to put him on the stand and let him testify and tell the judge that to her face.
Thank you for that very thorough explanation to the residents.
Thank you. The city attorney and I have had conversations in that we are going to go full force against this illegal composting, this illegal function on our Batchery. We had the pleasure to witness city attorney, Bures, before the appeals court, and I think everyone who was there can attest to how capable he is at representing the city. It was very impressive. I'd like to thank you again for all the hard work you've done, Gilbert, very much. Thank you very much. That, it'll be a big thanks after that.
Ma'am Sully, you know, this is, you're the mayor, and, and we need you to lead it. So we'd like to thank you, please, everybody, thank the city.
Thank you.
Gary Hopkins, Vice President of Firefighters, Harahan, Harahan Firefighters Association. I have a prepared statement. It's been a year now since the last time that we addressed y'all, and we have some, some questions. What does the future of this fire department, what is the vision or master plan that you hold for us? All I know is that we cannot accept the status quo any longer. We, we have a vision for a much better fire department, much better. We're capable of so much more. I told this council before that we need to work together to find immediate solutions with some pressing problems and concerns. We can't stand by and wait and hope for change any longer. We've been more than patient for well over a decade, for far too long. We stood by, we've seen other departments get equipment, personnel, raises in a timely manner, while we are overlooked or ignored. We have personnel that take home less than five hundred dollars every two weeks. We have outdated equipment, and we're still shorthanded. The people you see back on the wall here, we all have multiple jobs, some of us working over a hundred hours a week just to make ends meet. We, we have to start moving forward. If we don't, we're going to start losing knowledgeable and skilled men to other fire departments and to other industries. We just can't survive like this anymore. Time for hope and optimism and patience is gone. We need decisive and progressive actions immediately. We have formed two separate committees through our association, made up of firemen and citizens, to try to give the city some insight and options for what we can do to move forward confidently. We need the insight, experience, and opinions of the councilman, the mayor, the chief, so we can move forward. If nothing is done, and you can mark my words, we are going to lose men. We just can't survive. I invite all of y'all to come to the firehouse and come see exactly what we're talking about and start this conversation. And I'm, I'm sorry if this kind of comes off sounding a little threatening, but you see what's standing behind me. This is what we, this is the truth for us. This is our livelihoods. We're speaking from the heart. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lee Brown, President of the Harahan Firefighters Association. Just to expand on what Gary Hopkins was speaking about, yes, this year we were fortunate and did hire one additional employee, but we're still short an additional, an employee going back to two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. We also used to have a couple of part-time employees that could fill in on vacation when people called in sick. Another thing that we used to do is, when we were off duty, we'd respond to calls. We don't do that anymore. I don't do it anymore. I have, we haven't gotten raises since two thousand six. We're getting beat down, and we need, we really need something done. On a brighter note, last week, clocks fall backwards. You're supposed to change your batteries in your smoke detectors. If you aren't able to do so, or you need a smoke detector, we have smoke detectors at the firehouse, free of charge. We come out, we'll install them, no charge to the homeowner. You can call the fire station at seven-three-seven-nine-nine-five-seven, and we'll be glad to come out and see how many you need and put them up for you.
Thank you for your service, thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Mike Bowler, seventy-nine Glenwood. I'd like to also speak out against imposing any kind of recycling fees. It's really ridiculous. People can go to a private company, and for ten dollars a month, I'm looking right now, they can have their recycling picked up from Phoenix Recycling. So there's really no need for y'all to impose a fee for us to have our recycling picked up when it's that cheap. Thank you.
We will now close, address the council. Approval of the minutes?
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on October nineteenth.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on October nineteenth.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yea.
We, we have three.
No, nay.
City Attorney, Bures, when it's a tie, can the mayor vote or not?
Wish you wouldn't spring these on me.
Because it's not like, it's an abstention.
Well, I'm going to defer to Nicole on this. You think the mayor can do it?
I think.
On the minutes?
Anything but an ordinance.
Strictly procedural.
Okay, so I vote to approve. With the mayor's vote, it is three yays, two nays, minutes are approved. Communications?
The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in October, and reading of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board Subcommittee on October twenty-sixth.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Dispense, minutes are dispensed from reading.
And accepting the minutes of Planning and Zoning Board Subcommittee on October twenty-sixth.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I'm voting to approve, to accept. It is three to approve, two deny, so the minutes are accepted.
Alrighty. And reading of the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board on November first.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. Minutes are dispensed with reading.
And accepting the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Board on November first.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I, I placed my approval, so it is three-two. The minutes are accepted. Resolutions?
Alright, proposed resolution number twenty-seventeen dash twenty-two. The following resolution was offered unanimously by the Council of the City of Harahan, a resolution providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the result of the special election held in the city of Harahan, state of Louisiana, on Saturday, October fourteenth, twenty-seventeen, to authorize the levy of a special tax therein.
Anyone wishing to speak to this resolution from the public may come up. If no one is here that would like to speak, we will close the public hearing. Council discussion?
No discussion.
No, if there's no discussion, do I have a motion to proceed to accept?
Motion.
The resolution? I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor of the resolution?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, resolution passes.
Alright, ordinances for approval. Proposed ordinance number twenty-seventeen dash sixteen. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Bodie and seconded by Councilman Hewitt. This is an ordinance approving the rezoning of sixty-nine fifteen Jefferson Highway lots B four, B five, B six, and D one A, tract C, Soniat Plantation subdivision, city of Harahan, parish of Jefferson, state of Louisiana, from R one to C one.
But it's supposed to be put on for December seventh, correct?
Yeah.
Right. I have a motion to defer to the December seventh special city council meeting, the same day that we're having the budget hearing, by Councilman Bodie, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, one absent. It is deferred to December seventh.
Alrighty. And proposed ordinance number twenty-seventeen dash twenty-eight, which was deferred on October nineteenth. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Johnston and seconded by Councilman Bodie. This is an ordinance to amend and reordain section seventy-eight dash forty-four of the Harahan Municipal Code by adding thereto a new subsection to be designated subsection E to provide for the imposition of a charge for residential curbside recycling services and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
This is another one that I would like to defer via that, what Councilman Wheeler brought this morning, that she wasn't able to get a date to have the town hall meeting, so I'd like this deferred until we're able to have.
December twenty-first meeting?
December twenty-first meeting.
It will be scheduled, and it will be held before the next council meeting.
That's December twenty-first.
So there's a motion to defer this ordinance to the regularly scheduled December twenty-first meeting by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. The ordinance is deferred.
And I would just like to ask for those people who are either for or against the recycling town hall meeting, we want to hear from everybody.
Show up.
And we've got some other avenues that we're looking into, maybe possibly either the fee, or maybe the tax, let the citizens vote for it, or maybe a private service. So please come out, once the date and time is set, like I said, the location will be at the senior center. So we'll let everybody know. We'll post on the marquee, social media, we'll let everybody know. So please come. We want people to speak their opinion for it, and those that are also against it, too.
Definitely.
I know some people don't always come that are against it, but we would ask, we would like everybody, we want to hear from everybody. So we'll let you know the date.
And anyone who cannot make that meeting, please feel free to contact your counsel, myself, through the city website, through emails. You can do it through Report a Concern, it's very easy, or get our emails on the city website, so we want to hear from you. Thank you very much. Madam Clark?
Proposed ordinance number twenty-seventeen dash twenty-nine. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman. This is for dues, fees, membership subscriptions for, is it regulatory?
Let me encourage a second, just so that some people can discuss. Thank you very much.
Seconded by Councilman Bodie.
Councilman Bodie seconded. Thank you very much.
Alright, and as mandated by LSA RS thirty-nine thirteen oh five, to fund for the projected complete year of dues, fees, membership subscriptions for the regulatory department. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number eighteen twenty-two, the annual budget revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance can come up and speak. If no one is wishing to speak, we will close the public hearing. Council discussion?
Just as I stated last meeting, it's, has an increase in spending, but not where the revenue's coming from, and I can't support it.
Any other discussion?
Councilman Benton, I just want to get your opinion on it and see what you're thinking, and, because I don't want to just vote it down.
Well, the thing, the thing that I don't understand is that, at the last, at the, at the budget meeting, I can't, I think it was somebody in main, in recreation was told that it wasn't true that the city doesn't have money, that all they have to do is come and ask us for the money.
This isn't for capital.
What's that?
That was speaking about capital money.
And where is this coming from?
This is coming from, that's the general fund.
Just the general fund.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Councilman Benton, will you be willing to defer, and maybe we can?
Yeah.
Councilman Benton, will you be willing to defer and maybe we can work on it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a motion to defer to the December 21st meeting, correct? December 21st?
Yes.
Regular city council meeting by Councilman Baudier, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays. Ordinance is deferred.
Proposed ordinance number 2017-30. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman?
I'll second.
Baudier.
Councilman Baudier.
An ordinance to amend and reordain ordinance number 1333, specifically section 11B13 of Appendix A of the Code of the City of Harahan, relative to square footage allowable by the city of Harahan for general retail services in the C1 neighborhood commercial district and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
That was not, that was deferred by Planning and Zoning, so we have to defer this.
It hasn't, action hasn't been taken yet.
I have a motion to defer to the next meeting, the December 21st meeting.
Do we even have to defer, or it just automatically comes back to us?
Yeah, just...
Well, we've...
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Baudier. All in favor to defer to December 21st meeting?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. It is deferred.
Proposed ordinance number 2017-32. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton and seconded by Councilman?
You're killing me, Councilman Benton. You're killing me over here.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, Councilman Johnston, thank you very much.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 1822, the annual budget of revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the Maintenance Department of the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Prior to opening up, I guess we could do this after. It does need to be amended. Anyone, we'll open it up to public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance? If no one wishes to speak to this ordinance, we'll close the public hearing. I provided this to...
Oh, I gave them all one.
Oh, you did?
We already had one, yes.
What about the city attorney? Does he have one also?
He does, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because I'm the same way, I could assert.
Yeah.
Councilman Benton, can I ask you to make a motion to amend the ordinance?
Okay, motion to amend the ordinance to read line 17, section 2, for the purchase of a Kubota lawn tractor in the amount of, and then line 18, 9,72972, increase line item 341-4-115-90920, capital outlay maintenance.
I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by?
I'll second.
Councilman Baudier to amend the ordinance as read and handed to the city clerk. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays. Amendment is accepted onto the ordinance. Counsel discussion?
Yeah, I have a, at the budget hearing that we just had Tuesday, Edward had mentioned something about that there was a grant that came in for the purchase of a tractor. So why is this ordinance coming up and why are we pulling it from capital?
The, we just got a letter from Legap that will allow us to put this on to, this was already on the agenda, to tell you the truth. We got it a day ago, two days ago, something like that, right before the council meeting. So we actually...
Well, I mean, if the grant was allowed, then this ordinance should be withdrawn. The money was put in between a grant. I don't want to pull it from capital.
Well, what will, I wish Linda was here, because we might want to just defer this, because we might still need to move it on to the budget in a certain way, in order to get that.
Okay, because you... To December 21st?
Okay, I have a motion to defer to December, we'll be busy on December 31st.
We're going to be there all night on the 21st.
And that's the week of my birthday, so. I have a motion to defer to December 21st, city council meeting by Councilman Johnston, no, by Councilman Wheeler.
Baudier.
And that's Baudier. Thanks for keeping track. And seconded by Councilman Johnston. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays, and it is deferred.
Alrighty. Proposed ordinance number 2017-33. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Baudier and seconded by Councilman?
Okay, I'll second. I'll second.
Johnston. An ordinance granting full read-only access to any and all accounting software systems for departmental heads and their designated representatives.
We will open this up to public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance may come up. If no one's here...
It's sad that we have to do an ordinance to this. This is public record, these financial reports. I have asked repeatedly for most a year now to have access to all financial records of the city, and I can never get an answer. And it's come to this where an ordinance has to be passed in order to get it done. Still don't mean it's going to happen, but at least they're trying. Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed. Counsel discussion? I'd like to say a few things about it. But you can go first, I think.
Yeah, well, the only problem I have with it, I have no problem having read only for everybody, but in section two, it states access to all aspects and departments of all accounting systems in addition to having editor authority for updating and modification. That's, you know, I think that might be a little iffy right there.
That's the same concern I have.
Section two?
Oh, yeah, under section two.
Okay.
Just before the vote.
Yeah, I got the wrong ordinance.
I've got grave concern about that. There's not a CPA, accountant, bookkeeper on this planet who would attest to the financial statements if other people could go in and edit it.
I don't see how you can do that.
You can't do it. There's no internal controls. It's impossible.
Yeah, I want to give them, anything needs full read access. I want them to have it all, but...
And also...
That can get a little iffy, especially when you're getting all department, all departments involved.
Full read access is available, anyone, including the chief and his staff, have always been welcome to come to city hall and view the full access on all the financials.
Mayor, why would the chief have to come to city hall? Why can't he just have access to read only?
Is there any reason why you would need editor?
I wonder where that was in there. I didn't draft this. I just want...
You just want read only?
I think every department should have read only.
Yeah, let's do that.
Can we amend, taking out?
Okay.
Editor?
What would section do you want to?
All aspects.
Motion by Baudier.
In addition. Just take on an addition to having editor authority.
Want to make your motion. Do you want to?
Get rid of the addition.
Why don't we discuss this a little bit further before we make any amendments?
Alright.
Just to make sure. I mean...
Are you on it?
Yeah.
Alright.
Why not?
I mean, I don't mind deferring it, and we can sit and we can have some...
We'll just make sure we got the proper language in there. I mean, we're making a decision right now to amend it. I think we need to review it a little bit further.
This is something that I've been working on with the Police Advisory Committee.
I don't want to make a rash decision right now.
Yeah, instead of, it's not a difficult ordinance, and even though we add it on to an already lengthy December 21st agenda, I'll make a motion to defer, and we'll get the correct terminology put in place and represent it on the 21st.
I'll second it. I have a motion to defer to December 21st by Councilman Baudier, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Ordinance is deferred.
Alright. Proposed ordinance number 2017-34. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Baudier and seconded by Councilman?
I'll second.
Wheeler. An ordinance amending the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Councilman Wheeler. Thank you very much. The public hearing on this ordinance is now open. Anyone wishing to address the council, please come up. If there's no one wishing...
I sent y'all something today, an email in regards to this. State law and the Doyle case basically says the elected police chief has total access and control of his or her police department budget. And I can move the money around any kind of way that I want. It's very explicit. I sent it to y'all this afternoon. And if y'all have any questions, I mean, I just went to class in Baton Rouge, put on by a legislative auditor that state said.
And no disrespect, but I do believe you have full control of your budget, but this, to me, just seems like it's allowing you to move money all around your whole budget.
Correct.
Where I think it should still be in a lot on a budget like the rest of the city is. But I think you should still come to us to move it around. I believe you have the authority to move your own money around, but upon council approval, I believe.
Okay.
We will now close. Address the council. Any further discussion? I'm going to ask city attorney, would you care to weigh in on, since the chief is quoting the Doyle case, and this came up during the budget hearings, and I was, you weren't here to explain...
This will be the third time you have to explain this.
And I apologize. I know.
Well, I think Councilman Johnson's observation is well taken. I mean, the council controls the fisc of the city. You know, the police department is not a sui juris entity. It's not a legal entity to itself. It's simply part of the city like any other division, any administrative subdivision of the city is. So I would think that it would be in the council's best interest not to cede any of its authority in any way, shape, or form over its control of the city budget. Beyond that, the Doyle case, and in particular, the quote that the chief sent around today in his email, very specifically says that the budget is controlled by the mayor and board of aldermen. Now, I've puzzled over that, because the Lawson Act says the same thing. It uses the conjunctive, mayor and board of aldermen. It's one of those oddities of the Lawson Act that, you know, has never been adequately explained in law. And I think the reason it hasn't been explained is that, you know, to litigate over this kind of issue takes a lot of time and a lot of money, and the Lawson Act applies to municipalities that don't have a lot of money to spend on litigating over the niceties of points of law. So that aside, that little observation aside about what the Doyle case says, I think Councilman Johnson's position is well taken on that, that this...
With that...
This ordinance goes...
How do you explain a finance director, a finance department's allocated $48,000, and they are over budget by almost $100,000? How do we explain that one?
You know, chief, I've been scratching my head over some way to resolve these political fights, these three-way political fights that go on over the budget. And the process, which I think is legitimate, and I'm not a governmental accountant, but I think it's legitimate to view budgets in the context of allocating portions of overhead to departments. But like I said, I'm not a governmental accountant, but my familiarity with it is that that is a legitimate way to do governmental accounting. And I've been trying to figure out some way to, you know, for you guys to just get a mediator involved, or an arbitrator, or somebody, instead of going to litigation, which frankly, the city can't afford, so that you guys can get some sort of battle plan as to how your budget's put together and what legitimately gets attributed to certain departments. You know, chief, you know, my billing, I try to break it out when there's a specific item, like you've got a civil service issue, or you've got a traffic accident that happened, you know, because of a police vehicle. You know, that kind of stuff I can break out pretty easily as, okay, this is obviously a police matter. But then there comes, you know, other stuff, like, for instance, city council meetings, where I'm called upon to answer questions about a lot of different issues that affect a lot of parts of the city. Well, how do you allocate that? You know, or what happens, the emperors thing is a perfect example, the pension questions. You know, the police department blames human resources for dropping the ball. Human resources blames the police department for not bringing over the paperwork. Now, how am I supposed to divide up my time on that? You know, allocate it 50/50 to everybody?
Explain that one.
So, what was your question?
How do you explain, I was charged $700, something dollars for you to attend one council meeting? Explain that one.
Well, you know, I can see that if I were doing like thumbnail accounting, I'd say, you know, the police department is going to get one council meeting out of 12 this year. Pick that up.
Sure.
I can see that as sort of a legitimate way to apportion costs.
I know, it sounds like you checked too.
But...
Ms. Lulu said that was a coding error.
And at that moment, at the budget hearing, when it was broke...
But there's so many errors, but if that bill would have came to me beforehand, we would have caught it. All I ask is any other purchase order, any other invoice, any other payroll that goes through the city for the police department, I have to sign off on. The mayor and Ms. Lulu took it upon themselves to pay you, Ms. Lulu, and CRI, the city auditor, almost $50,000 in bills that I did not see until after the fact. All I'm asking is submit the invoices to me, let me review them, I can do every other purchase order or invoice, and let me sign off on them. They hit someone for CRI that I wouldn't have paid, because I didn't get the service that they said that they provided. And I was going to challenge it, but no, they went ahead and paid it.
Well, chief, with all due respect, at least, I can't speak for Ms. Lulu or what she bills, but I think it's very clear, you have no authority over the city attorney.
Pardon?
You have no authority over the city attorney.
I didn't say that I did.
But you can't...
But I have to...
You couldn't, you...
Okay, let's go a little step further. The civil service meeting, the civil service problem, it was, they call a bad weather day. Over two years ago, the mayor, I think it was an honest mistake, declared a holiday on a Friday. Police and fire civil service are granted the same benefits of any other non-civil service employee. So that particular day, I walked over to city hall with some employees. City hall shut down. So police and fire employees put in for overtime that day. It was denied. Police and fire took it to civil service. It's not a police department issue by me, it's a personnel issue with civil service. I'm being billed for the city attorney to attend those meetings. It's not a police issue, it's a police and fire civil service issue. That's another one. It's like five, $6,000. That's not one that I should be paying. I didn't call a holiday.
Chief, with all due respect...
Pardon?
With all due respect, I did not call a holiday. This has been...
You closed city hall.
It was not called a holiday. This has been, this has been, one of the reasons our fees go up with our professionals, because even when the professionals weigh in, OSE weighed in and told you it wasn't a holiday. He came down here and told you it wasn't a holiday. The city attorney told you it wasn't a holiday. Then you have brought in and brought it before the civil service board.
I didn't bring him before the civil service. Employees brought it. You did.
You did. And then you had the city attorney who had to attend those civil service meetings. So all those fees from the city attorney were prompted by your actions, even after you were told by professionals that no holiday was accounted for.
Go answer this question. Did you close city hall that day? Yes or no?
City hall?
Did you close city hall that day?
She has the authority to do that under the personnel policy of the city of Harahan.
Excuse me?
She can do, she can do that. She can close city hall.
And let people off that day.
And what happened was, those people were sent off, and I told her, they can't get paid for that day, because you don't have a personnel policy in place.
But they were paid that day.
And the money was taken back. It was taken back by...
Months later, after it came up as an issue.
Well, you know, chief, when a mistake, when a chief, when a mistake is made, it takes time to correct it. Now, listen, I've dealt with this problem till I'm blue in the face, and I'm really tired of putting up with it. I've written my opinion, my opinions on this have been backed up by the Office of the State Examiner. If I have to put up with any more of this, if I have to spend any more time on this issue, it's going to be in court, so that I can tell the Civil Service Commission with a judgment what its authority is. It has no jurisdiction over the unclassified personnel of this city. And if anybody's going to get paid for time not worked, they're going to get paid according to a rule adopted by this council. There's going to be an ordinance on the books authorizing it. Nobody, neither classified or unclassified, is going to walk off getting paid for no work for the city, unless there's a stated policy in law that requires it. Now, that's it. And I don't know how to make it any plainer than that. The weather day issue...
The mayor closed city hall, employees were sent home with pay, and when it came up as a civil service issue, then they may retrospect, had those employees take a day off.
And you know what, chief? When that happens, your people are not entitled to one red cent extra. Not one red cent.
Except for civil service.
They were there, working the day. They were paid to work on their, they were paid to work on the day. Doesn't matter what the mayor does. There's some theories of law that say that there should be no emergency pay for any fire or police personnel, because that's what their job is. They're required to work during emergencies. So when you're going to pay them special pay, it's by a special rule. Special duty pay, hazardous duty pay, and this is why I told you, you need a special ordinance to make sure that if the fire and police services are called to work overtime during weather emergencies, like a hurricane, you need to have rules on the books, because FEMA will not reimburse you unless you have a rule extant on the books. I spent a lot of time writing an ordinance about that, and it was pulled last month. I don't know why. But, you know, I've looked at this, trying to protect you guys in the event, we just had a hurricane. to protect you guys in the event, we just had a hurricane scare. In the event this comes along, you guys need to have rules in place that deal with how your employees get paid. Or else, you're not gonna get a FEMA reimbursement.
There was an ordinance, but by your request, you and Mr. Credo were still working out, and it was of your advice till y'all worked it out, to pull it away. So it was under your advice to withdraw that ordinance. Yes, sir.
Okay, well.
Yes, sir.
Is it coming back?
Well, I'm waiting on you.
Our ordinance, civil service just got, civil service got told last month.
Mr. Biers, Mr. Biers, you've had plenty of time. I sponsored the ordinance.
I know.
You said that you and Mr. Credo were still working it out. And we said, before anything comes ahead, we would go ahead and withdraw it, under your advice, till y'all worked it out.
You, you, you didn't, you didn't get the, the last memo. What happened?
You just said the ordinance was withdrawn.
It was.
It was withdrawn by, because of your request. Y'all were still working out whatever needed to be worked out before it was brought forward.
You said it had to be resolved at the civil service.
And then, you didn't, well, here's what hap, here's what happened, let me tell you what happened with civil service. They got a letter from the O S E last month, when they came up with their own little emergency payroll. And the O S E said, you don't have any authority to enact this. This can only come from the city. So that meeting, just before that meeting, because this came out two days before the meeting, I started reworking the ordinance that we had drafted for the city rule. I didn't tell anybody to withdraw that thing. I, I, in fact, I submitted it to you by email that, that day. I said, we need these additional amendments.
And you told me there was some new information that was provided to you that day. So we couldn't be able to, that y'all wanted to wait until the meeting was held. We can play back the minutes.
Okay, we can play the minutes, but I need the ordinance to come back, because our rule has to be in place. The O S E has told civil service, you have nothing to say about this. This comes, the city sets the policy on any kind of special pay. You can tag along if you want, whatever you write, you can write. But it's the city that sets the rule.
And I'd like to, I appreciate getting that information from O S E through you, because I am not getting the information from the civil service board.
I think it surprised the civil service board. I didn't, I wasn't involved in that. They just, they sent up the proposed rule to civil service in Baton Rouge, and civil service wrote them a scathing, two-page letter that said, you don't have any authority to do this.
Okay, I'm gonna motion that we call for, I call for a vote.
Still an issue with civil service, folks.
No, shoot, there's a motion on the table to call for the vote by Councilman Benton. Do I have a second? We can go up or down on it. Let's have a vote. You can still vote, however you wanna vote. Can we have a second?
We were still discussing.
The motion's on the table.
It's not getting a second.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Now, can I take it back to committee? Make a motion to defer, take it back to committee, and see if we can come back with some amicable terminology that maybe everybody can agree on, and, and work through it like that. I'd like to make a motion to defer.
I'll second it. There's a motion to defer to the December twenty-first meeting, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have, Councilman Johnson?
Yeah.
We have three to one. It is deferred. And I would just like to add that I do believe that the police chief has a line item budget. The local government budget act, which I brought with me tonight, clearly states that all expenditures have to be by character, by, you have to name it for the city, by the department, and by the character. And that, that's how every budget is to be written. And I will reiterate that that Doyle case, it was the way that that amendment was written to the budget that was flawed. The amendment gave a lump sum of money to the police department that did not specify its use. Thus, in that particular instance, because it wasn't specified, it was at that, at the police chief's discretion. But that is not how budgets are done anymore. The local budget act specifically says that all money and all expenditures have to be stated to the city, to the department, and to the specific use. Thank you very much. Madam clerk, next.
Real quick, could I just make a suggestion? Maybe this might be a form of best practices. Why doesn't every P O invoice for every department, if you're a department head, Todd's fire, chief, maintenance, so we don't have these issues? Let the P O, the purchase order go to the department head, let them sign off on it before any bills get paid. Why isn't that just a, a best practice standard across the city?
Madam clerk, next.
Oh, we're not gonna answer that, people. I guess that's gonna get deferred to the twenty-first, too. It's just a best practice. We wouldn't have these discussions if every department had just approved their POs. And then there's the signing, so you can say, chief, you said you didn't authorize that? Chief, yes, you did. There you go. Could solve, could solve a lot of problems.
Yep.
Let's move on, please.
Proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen dash thirty-five. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Bodier and seconded by Councilman.
I'll second.
Johnston. An ordinance correcting a clerical error in the Harahan municipal code for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
This ordinance is open to public hearing. Anyone wishing to come and speak to this ordinance? If no one wishes to speak to the ordinance, we will close the public hearing. Council discussion?
No discussion.
Do I have a motion to proceed with the vote?
Motion.
Have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
We have three yays, one nay. Ordinance passes.
Ordinances for introduction. Proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen dash thirty-six. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman, who would like to, this is for Colonial. Wheeler?
It says unanimous.
It does, but it shouldn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm.
It does, but it shouldn't, because I'm.
It shouldn't be unanimous.
Okay. An ordinance approving the re-subdivision of Lot A two A, Soniat Archapetula's Plantation Subdivision, City of Harahan, Parish of Jefferson, State of Louisiana, made by Ronald Clement P L S, dated August twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen. Proposed ordinance number.
I'd like to make a comment, just so that the public has the information. The planning and zoning board did recommend.
Did not.
Wait, did make a recommendation on this zoning issue. We have eight members seated of the nine-member board. It was seven one against this rezoning.
There were two that were for it. Not that that matters.
No, there was seven one.
There were two that were for it.
No, there wasn't, and I was there.
Yeah, it was.
Mr. Fredlaw and Dale Hales.
There were two. Oh, well, I'm sorry. Then, thank you. I stand corrected. I thought it was one. Thank you. I stand corrected. Thank you. So it was two. Okay. But it still failed. So next ordinance?
Are we discussing ordinances for introduction?
No, no, I just wanted to give the public information.
Well, are we discussing ordinances for introduction? That was my question.
Shouldn't.
No.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to clarify.
Proposed ordinance number twenty seventeen dash thirty-seven. The following ordinance was proposed by unanimously by the council. No, by, no, it was by Councilman, uh.
It's the mayor's proposed budget. It goes up.
Right, somebody has to motion for it.
Somebody has to sponsor the ordinance.
Thank you.
Alrighty. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, for the city of Harahan, Louisiana.
Old business? None. New business? The planning and zoning appointment, I have asked Ms. Barbara Harney, who, to be on the planning and zoning board, to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Deborah Nash. Ms. Barbara Harney, I don't know if you'd like to come up. She is a well-known member of the community. If you just tell us about your family, your history here, please, and just let us know. Thank you very much.
I've lived in Harahan all my life. My grandparents immigrated, my mother's parents from Ustica, Italy, around nineteen hundred, so we've been here forever. And I would like to be on the board, to do what's in the best interest of the city of Harahan.
And you've always been a public servant. You've been in the school system.
Twenty-seven years, yes.
Barbara Harney probably knows almost every single resident on every single street.
I know a little bit of everybody on every street.
She does. And thank you for putting your name in for nomination.
Well, thank you for nominating me.
I'd like to, do I have a motion to proceed with the vote, to approve? I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, second, I mean, Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman Johnston. All in favor?
Yeah.
If you wanna vote.
Any, motions on the table. All approved?
Yay.
Yay, two. Any opposed?
Nay.
And Councilman, uh, city attorney bureaus, may I, since this is a motion for nomination, may I? I will break the tie and approve. Congratulations, Ms. Harney, very much. We really appreciate you, your willingness to serve. Thank you very much. Civil service board appointment is under new business number two. We received a letter of nominees that I sent to the council to look at and has, does anyone have a nominee that they would like to put forward? Would we, do you want more time to?
I prefer more time.
It's in your packets, guys. It's in your packet.
So.
Yeah, if we can push it off.
Right. And Councilman Johnson, if you would really kind of help take the lead, maybe, see who, you know, can, we can do this. So let's add this on to new business, or does it go into old business now?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. For the December twenty-first meeting.
A motion and second that, or to defer it, or no?
Well, we're just placing, I'll, I'm placing it. Okay. Madam clerk, number three.
Notice is hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Thursday, December twenty-first, twenty seventeen, at seven-thirty P M. at the city hall council chambers, sixty-four thirty-seven Jefferson Highway, Harahan, Louisiana, the city council of the city of Harahan, state of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in the city of Harahan to authorize the levy of an ad valorem tax.
This is an ad valorem tax that we would like to put up for a vote to support our recreation department. As you can see, many of the struggles here in the city have always been over budget issues and revenue, having enough revenue to meet the needs. So this is to help our recreation department.
I would like to make a comment. I think the timing on this is politically motivated and driven to hurt the police millage that we're also putting on the ballot. It's hard enough to keep taxing people over and over and over. The police department, though, don't get me wrong, I love the recreation department, and I do everything I can to support them. The police department is paramount that we support in the next millage. And I, I just think that as citizens, we all have to sit down and understand that we live right next to the murder capital of the world. I mean, we're murder capital of America, I'm sorry. And, and I think honestly, the next thing that we should support should be this police millage, no matter what. Just like the fire department, and you've heard these guys' woes, the police are the same way. We're losing policemen in droves. You know, when I got on this committee, my number one drive to be on a police advisory committee was to figure a way to keep policemen here for their entire career. For years, I, I got preached to bedroom community, bedroom community, bedroom community. I never really understood it for a good bit. Took me some time to get it, and I finally figured it out. And to me, the definition of a bedroom community is where a police officer can start and finish this career. A bedroom community is a police officer that my, my children can run to and not run from. And I think absolutely one hundred percent, the police millage is the next thing we need to be concentrating on. Anything to deter that, or any alternate of that, should be definitely put on side and not be put into some kind of political humdrum or motivation of, of hurting the police department, because of the rift between the, the mayor and the police chief. So I, I, I am.
Well, since you've never talked to me about motivation, I don't like it as.
Wow. Hey, can you just not cut me off? You've been cutting me off all meeting. And, and I'm, I'm starting to get frustrated. I'm trying to be polite and respectful, but I would expect you, I would, I'm asking you to do the same. Jesus, you do it to, to throw people's train of thought off, so you, you can jump in with your, your own motives. Again, this police millage will be on the ballot. I am in one hundred percent support of it. If you love this community, and you cherish this community, and you love what we have, you gotta be in favor for it, and it should be the only next thing that we ask for. Because without our police department, there'll be no playground.
Okay. He's, he paused. I'll speak. Like I said, I don't believe that any of us should try and ascribe motives to other people. We haven't had a conversation about this. And if you wish to speak, then let's speak about it. You clearly stated, and I concur, that it is time for the city to make some choices and really start funding the programs and the departments in the city. And in order to do it, economically, it costs a lot of money to put on an election. It would be a missed opportunity not to have another millage put up at the same time when we're having the cost already there. And the children at the playground, as you heard, Eric Chataline, dear friend of yours, about the many, many needs in the recreation department also. It was, that, that's the motivation. Thank you very much. Secretary's report, oh, wait, sorry, sorry, jumping ahead. It's now time for address the council.
Eric Chataline, seven hundred Colonial Club Drive. I know we're gonna talk about what we need at the playground real quick. I mean, I believe y'all have capital money for the playground, air condition, capital money in general, not for the playground. Air condition's broke, needs to be fixed. Capital money could be used for that. Same note, three years ago, came in, sat in your office, spoke about a playset, a new playset. I had an individual willing to put up twenty-four thousand dollars. The state was gonna fund us sixty thousand dollars. You told me out of your mouth, I'm wasting my time. You have something in the work. That's three years ago. I had people that were in your office sitting with me for that conversation. Still not a playset there. Don't come up with all this stuff about, we're gonna help the playground or something now. This just blew my mind just now when I heard this. You don't recall that conversation?
I don't recall you saying you had twenty-four thousand dollars, no.
You don't recall anything with this playset at the playground? The state was funding money. I had an individual willing to fund it. You said, I'm wasting my time. I don't need three minutes.
I don't use that language.
Wasted my time. Exact words. You just, you just blew my mind when you said that. We need air condition work at the playground? I'm not saying we need a millage to be passed. Police is more important than the playground. I agree a hundred percent. Playground does need some attention. If you put all of these millages on the taxes, they're going there to vote no. So we don't wanna overload the ballot with millages.
Eddie Gregory, three six six, East Avenue. I just wanna make it short and, you know, sweet. So mayor, look, I gotta ask you. Look, now, before I even say anything, look, I voted for you, mayor. I did. I want you to start leading. Look, I run a company, and I'm telling you, it's a painful lesson for me to learn. And look, this is like the pot calling a kettle black, believe me. But just trying to impose your will and not working with everybody is not leading. Okay? And it's very frustrating as a citizen to hear the same things over and over. Now, I'm not saying the council's a hundred percent right. I'm not saying the police chief's a hundred percent right. But it's just my opinion and what it looks like to me, is you're trying to just derail everything. I don't see anything positive coming from you. And I asked you the other day, or last couple of meetings ago, start to lead. And it, it would, you know, and, and just so you know, it's extremely rude when somebody's addressing you for you to look down and write the whole time. I'm, I'm just very frustrated as a citizen, and you're still gonna do it.
I, I'm trying to take my notes. Yes, sir.
You know what I read, Mr. Eddie, the other day? I read, let me see if I can quote this right. Leadership is not a title, but a choice.
Yeah.
Exactly. And that's what we deal with.
So what can we do as a city to get everybody on the same page? That's a genuine question. And I think I'm entitled to a genuine answer.
She's not gonna answer you.
Hey, you know what? Look, we have leadership right now. It's not gonna change right now. So let's, let's work with what we got. And do you like Harahan, mayor? I, no, it's, it's a genuine question.
I love Harahan. I wouldn't be serving the chief.
Chief, you like Harahan? All right. Why can't y'all work together? There's gotta be common ground. There's gotta be common ground. You're not gonna get everything you want, and you're not gonna get everything you want. That's the way the world works. So, get together and work together and make something happen. Everybody, y'all wouldn't be up here if you didn't like Harahan, right? Everybody?
You see these meetings, we have to really love Harahan to be here.
No, you, you know, you know, it's sad that you laugh at that because it's, it's really disgusting what goes on here.
I agree, sir.
So, why are you not trying, changing it? Why are you not trying to change it? It doesn't seem to me, every time we, we ask the hard questions, it's, we don't wanna talk about it anymore. So, when is a good time to talk? Now, a couple of meetings ago, you said you would have me on some board. You said, 'cause, and I, I think it was just, I don't know what you were trying to say, but you want me to sit in on where to put the money? I told you, I'll be there tomorrow. I don't have all the answers, but I can tell you what. I know. You have three more minutes?
Yes.
I have a motion for three more minutes by Councilman Bodie, seconded by Councilman Johnson, all in favor.
Yay.
Any opposed? We have four yays, motion passes.
So, again, what can we do to get everybody on the same page? And when can we talk about it? If not now, when?
If you're finished speaking, I, I'll be happy to address this.
I'm asking you a question. We can't talk?
She's not gonna discuss it publicly.
I didn't-
You, well, he asked you a question, answer it. Why can't you answer it?
Carrie.
Why can't you?
Part of-
This is the same problem I had in my budget hearing two days ago. I'd ask a question, and I couldn't get an answer. I'd ask another question, couldn't get an answer. So, after an hour of asking and no answers, we decided to say, you know what? If this is how the night's gonna go, we'll just adjourn, 'cause we'll be here all night.
All right, well, how about this? City Attorney, when is a good time to have this conversation, that way we can actually communicate with each other? I, I mean, I don't know who else to ask.
It's like, like I said earlier, I've been racking my brains for trying to find some, some methodology for the resolution of, if nothing else, the budget issues and, and coming up with some sort of agreed procedure as to how the budget's gonna get done. And I, I gotta tell you, I don't have any brilliant answers right now.
Well, well, and, and I'll tell you right now, this is way beyond budget. This is, this is absolutely a fundamental difference of how we're gonna operate our lives, all right? And we're all hanging in the balance on what y'all are doing.
Mr. Gregory. When I first took office, I had high hopes for what we could accomplish.
Okay.
I still had very high hopes. On the accomplishments, we've done a lot. It has, it, it is a very difficult position that this entire council, the chief, fire chief, and everybody has been put in because we have some structural problems with our budget, not having the revenue to meet the demands. We have, um, a major change in how we presented the budget. The budget in the past wasn't presented how legally it needed to be, side by side, breaking out all the miscellaneous and all these types of things. Every change has brought a lot of angst because it's different than the way we did it in the past. I don't doubt that everyone here who ran for office did it because they want to do better by the city.
Okay.
But I'm gonna tell you, it starts with communication. And I have tried to have liaisons come in to talk, just to help the ca- the chief and I, to say, "How do we sit him and I, one-on-one, and find ground?" Because when you make it a posse, when you bring a group, I bring a group, we don't become people anymore, and you get entrenched in what you say and what you, what the, what your group wants to say. It starts with communication.
Fair enough. I'll tell you what, I'll even, look, I'll take you and the chief to see the seafood. We'll go sit down, have a beer, and we'll sit there and work it out.
I'm, I'm- And, Mr. Gregory, I am free.
How about that?
I, I, and I, I think this is one-
How about that, Chief, you in for that?
Any, you tell me any day, anytime, you have my cellphone?
I'm pretty sure I do.
388-6422.
I'm, I'm never gonna remember that. I can't remember my name half the time.
Everybody in the city has it, just so you know, it's on the website. Let's call-
But look, I, you know, and I would love to do that because-
And the three of us, and I will pay.
Oh, I ain't worried about that. I'll pay. I ain't worried about that. I want the city to do better.
I agree.
But I can tell, and, and, and I'm telling you, and I'm telling you this, I'm not trying to be mean, I'm not trying to attack anybody, I'm not trying to be disparaging, whatever you wanna call it. But it just seems like you, 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 and you are on the same page, and you and you are not. That's what it seems like sitting down here, all right? Whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, we only have to go by what we see here.
Kinda gone over our minutes, and I'm trying to get everybody in-
Okay, yeah, Roger that, yeah, love.
But, Mr. Gregory-
I will call both of y'all. I got both your phone numbers. We'll do it. I'm gonna tell you right now.
Um, I am, anytime. Not with, during the Christmas parade, not during, uh, Thanksgiving, on Thanksgiving.
It might be next week.
I'm happy to do it.
Tuesday, Wednesday, something like that. All right, well, I'll call you. We'll figure it out.
Any, I, this is what we need to do, because we have to see each other as human beings first. And, and the city has to be, our residents, it's not our egos, it's the residents' needs that come first.
But we're all residents. And, look, just to be clear, be warned, look, I'm a direct guy, so get ready. Just letting you know.
I'm a pretty direct gal, too. Thank you very much.
That's all good.
Mr. Buddy? Hold on, Mr. Buddy. Okay, go on, Mr. Buddy.
Tommy Buddy, 7208 Stone Lee Drive, and I wanna thank Mr. Gregory for his comments strongly. Believe in what you're saying. I'm here to talk about, uh, my understanding of the, an issue with the city appointing board members to unexpired terms. The revised statute 33:102D provides that successor appointments, open quote, dit, 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 for terms of equal length for all members to be determined by said authority or body, which terms shall be for not less than four years or more than 10 years. It's black and white. There's no provision for filling unexpired terms. This council at some point in time must, in, in our ordinance, says that terms are five years. Now, the city ordinance does provide for filling unexpired terms. It just seems to violate with some very clear state statute. And the reason I'm raising this for everybody's understanding is, I was appointed to the board, which I accepted and was willing to serve. It takes a good bit of time, if you wanna do it right, to try to figure out what that board is, because there's no cheat sheet. There's nothing handed to you. I was appointed for eight months. It's absurd. It's absurd. So, a kind of multifaceted issue here. Why are we not complying with state law? I agree the city ordinance says it. We have issues with city ordinances that say things that don't comply with the law. I hear the state law is this, the city's gotta live with it. It's pretty black and white. So, I'm gonna ask you folks to comment on this tonight, and if you think it needs to be changed, correct it. 'Cause I'm not serving for eight months. I'm resigning tonight. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask you, please, Mr. Buddy, not to resign.
I'm not serving for eight months, Mayor.
Wait, I'm ju- I'm just saying, um, I want, uh, we had a wonderful conversation on the phone, and I really thank you for your in-depth analysis, your hard work and your input. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer this to the city attorney. Um, and, Mr. Buddy, it may be, I don't know if Gilbert can speak to this on the spot, but it may be something that we get to you as quickly as possible.
Well, let me, thank you, Mayor, for that, but I don't want you to think this issue hadn't been raised by me, by administrative staff. And it was raised, it, when the, and here's how I, I learned about it. I got a copy.
Motion for three more minutes.
I have a motion for three more minutes by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all in favor.
Yay.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays, motion passes.
This, this, this issue, this eight-month appointment, which wasn't mentioned to me when I accepted, it's not what I accepted. I thought it was a five-year appointment. Again, I hadn't seen anything in black and white on it. When I got a member list for the current board, the eight or nine at the time, current members, it had wording on when their term expired. And I was looking at the list to see who I was gonna be meeting and working with. And then, so I looked at it probably two or three times, and on the third time, I said, "Must be a typo." Nobody would appoint me to a board for eight months. A board of this, that really requires a lot of homework. And, and listen, folks, I probably know this much now, when the universe of what I should know is this. I raised it with Ms. Charlene. I know Ms. Charlene spoke to someone, went back two or three times, she sent a corrected list. I'm not pointing fingers at Ms. Charlene. I don't know who made, who she spoke with, who, who made that decision, but I don't think Ms. Charlene changed it. Came out, back out with a term expiration of September of 2022, five-year term. I thought the matter was resolved. In looking at minutes that Ms. Judy is prepared, I see that I, my term expires in May of next year. And I know Ms. Judy is not making that decision in a vacuum. She's talking to somebody. Mayor, I don't know who she's talking to. No, you followed an ordinance. You, you neglected to follow the law.
Our zoning ordinance.
It's the zoning ordinance. It's part of zoning ord- um. The zoning ordinance has a provision-
And, and, Mr. Buddy, I, I, I'm not professing to be an attorney, but I will speak to what has been the practice in the city.
Uh, ma'am, I can, I believe you when you tell me that's been the practice of the city. It's in the zoning ordinance. But it conflicts with state law.
Mr. Buddy, are you the only one that terms ends in eight months?
No, I mean, I think Ms., Ms. Barbara was just elected, I don't know when her term expires, but I heard unexpired term.
She replaced Edward Neff to fill her own expired term.
Well, that would make sense.
No.
The city ordinance says, when you-
So, who decides the people that get appointed, where they go, and what positions they fill?
But it, but-
Mr. Bures, are you gonna need some time, a day or so to get, or, while you're going on vacation? If you do give us a moment.
Okay, Mr. Buddy, I'm looking at, you've got that in the side.
If the time is up, we're just-
So, what, what city ordinance are you looking at?
The ordinance is part of, what is it, 1333? I don't have it memorized. It, it provides, it provides for-
Yeah, but what's the, what's the specific thing that's relative to the appointment?
Uh, there's a section in there on appointments to the, uh, planning and zoning board in the city ordinance.
Okay, so here's what the state law says. Yeah, I know. Here's what the state law says. "If a vacancy occurs other than by an expiration of the term, it shall be filled by appointment by the original appointing authority for the unexpired term." So, let's parse that. If a va- it's, this is subsection E. "If a vacancy occurs other than by expiration of the terms," so if you die, or get off, or you're removed prior to the expiration of your term, "it shall be filled by appointment by the original appointing authority." It says "original appointing authority" because the original members of a zoning commissioner appointed one way, and the successors are appointed another way, "for the unexpired term." So, if somebody gets off the board, appointment is made, that appointment is for the unexpired term. The city ordinance got all those papers there. I don't think addresses that particular question. Says, "Should a vacancy be due to the expiration of a term, the member shall continue to sit until replaced." Well, that's standard law. You sit until the, somebody new is, is appointed. So, what do you see in the city ordinance that contradicts the state law?
I believe Ms. Judy referred me to a, uh, I don't have the city ordinance in front of me, and I certainly don't have it memorized. But I believe I saw-
So, Ms. Judy, what do you, what do you see that contradicts the state law?
A provision in there that talked about-
I think filling the unexpired term is appropriate.
I mean, and this is just the standard practice. You appoint, so, please don't get off the board.
Uh, I, I'm not serving for eight months. It's absurd. I'm not doing it.
You'll be up for reappointment.
Well, I don't know that. You, listen, it took about four to six months to appoint me.
You're gonna be up for reappointment.
This, this, this board, this, this administration has issues, a lot of trust issues. I have trust issues with this administration. I'm not serving for eight months. It's, it, it is way too much work and effort. I wanna do what's right for the city. I wanna give back to the city, but I'm not putting, I mean, I won't do this. This is silly. If, if, if this had been pointed out clearly to me, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, if somebody had said, "Tom, will you serve for eight months?" I would've said, "No." I'm, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have done it. I can't do it justice. By the time eight months rolls around, I may know how to spell planning and zoning board. So, so, I'm, I'm not mad at anybody, and nobody misled me, but I thought incorrectly, it was a five-year term.
But, Mr. Buddy, I'm gonna just tell you very honestly, you've done a wonderful job. I don't see any- At this point, you'll be up for rean option for, for reappointment for a full, your first full year, and you'll actually get to serve longer.
I'll defer my comment until I get a chance to read what, Mr. Bures.
Okay.
My, my, my just think, what you, Mr. Buddy, simply just, as soon as, as soon as you disagree with anything the mayor proposes, you're going.
Well, I'm, I'm not going there right now, but, um, thank you. I'll look that reference up.
That is just hyper. All right, Mr., thank you very much.
John Ream, 3 Rent Pass. I know that we brought this thing up about wood materials. I'm sorry, Mr. Buddy, I like to see you, you have a lot of experience, and we need you somewhere, you know, and involved. So, but anyway, uh, you know, bring up wood materials. I'm sorry I keep bringing up wood materials. Not too many people know anything about wood materials. They're behind the levy. They come in from Jefferson Parish to go behind the levy. They think nobody's around them. They throw sand up, comes over the, the levy into the Harahan community. They think they're not in Harahan. They are in Harahan. They're a company that is in Harahan. They have to abide by Harahan's laws. On November 29th, 2011, the Google map shows that they wasn't even back there doing any kind of composting. Wood Materials said he was, been back there since 2010. Mayor Paul Johnston, who's here right now, told him that he couldn't come back there to compost and mulch. After Hurricane Isaac, they came back in there, mulched. They only had a temporary DEQ permit to mulch and get rid of the mulch, 'cause it would, uh, bring the volume down of the, the green waste and get rid of that. Lo and behold, he doesn't leave after they, the DEQ, um, permit expires. It was only temporary. Doesn't leave, has an old DA, uh, LDAF, Department of Agriculture, um, permit from 2010 that he actually had. We got Harahan written on it. Didn't get rid of it. And this should be a look at, uh, on the state level and, and find out what happened here, because he attached a 2010 BMP, when he had a 2012, he attached it to the DEQ, uh, Temporary Storm Debris thing and got this into DEQ. Well, the DEQ sees this thing and says, "Well, they got a LDAF permit, so we're not gonna shut them down. We're gonna let them compost." This should be brought up on the state level. This should be brought to the governor. So, uh, and we brought, we went out on November, I mean, uh, March the first, uh, 2016, and went and visi- well, 2017, went and visited, um, Mike Strain. And we brought all our information to him. He says, "We're not gonna do anything because y'all have a court case in." Wood Materials is suing Harahan because he's illegally mulching and dumping trees and waste back there. Suing Harahan. Here the tree trucks are coming in, dumping in Harahan. We got a dump back there. You wanna see a dump, go up on the levy. Anytime during the day, you see these dump trucks, these, uh, tree trucks, Bartlett, A Perfect Cut, um, uh, Risk. You, I'll name the companies. I'll bring them out. They dumping illegally. They need to be ticketed. They coming into Harahan and dumping. We have no dump site.
Thank you very much.
We have no dump site. So I think something needs to be done, and we need to look at the state level, too.
And I just, I have to comment. This is with, as impassioned as the Reams have been, this is the first time I've ever seen Mr. Ream get that excited. And we are very thankful for your advocacy, so thank you very much. He doesn't have a paper, that's why. To keep him calm. All right. Mr. Johnson?
Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside Drive. I wasn't able to attend last month's council meeting, but I did want to publicly thank Councilmember Johnson and our police chief for their work in getting the radar signs on Riverside Drive. As said, I live on Riverside Drive. They don't slow everybody down, but the majority of the people are going at a more appropriate speed, and that is good. There are children that live on Riverside Drive. It's making it safer. I guess the money came from the parish. I don't know, but, uh, thank you, council member.
Thank you. We will now close, address the council. Let me make sure the timer's off. It's not. Okay. Secretary's report.
Secretary's report for October, $452,927.11. And Mayor, for reports, City Attorney Bures has some.
Oh, wow, good.
Actually, this is more in the nature of a question for the council rather than a report. Ms. Lewis, who was the attorney for Mr. Marone with respect to that rezoning on Jefferson Highway, she sent, I just wanted to let you know, she sent a draft to me of a document. I've been tweaking it a little bit. But one thing I wanted to ask of council members, because you were the guys who were taking this testimony, how specific do you want me to get with the restrictions on it? You know, they came and presented, um, you know, a site plan. They told you they were going to have a certain number of tables in the restaurant. What I've done is to tweak her proposal and say, well, the first thing you want to make sure is that it's a standard restaurant as defined in our zoning law, because we've got different kinds of restaurants. I'm also going to say that you have five years to get, to do your renovations, do your constructions, get a use and occupancy permit, and at the expiration of five years, if you don't have a use and occupancy permit for a standard restaurant, or you're not actually in operation as a standard restaurant, it reverts back to R1. But I'm thinking of adding some stuff in here about the specifics with respect to that standard restaurant. And so I'm asking you guys, because you were the ones who said this is something we want to explore. Do you want me to get as particular as possible with respect to the presentation you received with regard to number of tables, the landscape plan, and particularly to make sure they don't expand the building itself? That the building stays what it is. You're not going to do any additions to it.
The, the building has a lot of historic standing in the city. It is something that the people love. I think they would hate to eventually see something.
And, you know, I'll put something in here also about them, you know, obligating themselves to restrict, or at least.
Preserve.
Some, somehow ensure that their patrons don't put an excessive amount of parking stress on the surrounding streets, and that, you know, their dumpster trucks come in in a certain way during certain hours.
And ingress and dress.
Pretty particular about this, but you did, I sort of want to get your sense of whether you think that's appropriate, because that's how you were sold this.
I got a little bit different on what you said about occupancy.
Uh huh.
You said you have up to five years, but what I understood out of it was that if it failed within five years, it would revert back.
That's why I'm asking these questions.
Right, so the five years should not really start until the CO is issued. You can't take, I mean, in all fairness, you, if it takes him a year to renovate it, that shouldn't be part of his five years. I think the five years should start when his CO is issued and he's ready to start.
Is this going to take him a year?
I'm, I'm saying it could take a year. I don't know.
So.
I mean, I'd like, I'd like to see what y'all have now, if you could just send us, I know it's just a draft.
Sure, well, I mean, it doesn't say anything about this right now. His, this is what it says right now. If, well, I'll have to go back and find the, I'll send you what she originally said.
In all fairness, I don't think a year of his renovation should eat into his five years to turn it back.
So, I mean, was this like, you thought he would, he would have, is what you intended was that he would operate for a minimum of five years as a standard restaurant?
No, if you remember, he, he brought this up.
Yeah, I know.
Was that, obviously, some, there were some concerns of the citizens, that if it failed, they wanted it to resort back. But if it's five years of failure, but it takes him a year to renovate it, I don't think that year should be part of his five.
You mean, five years to failure?
Well, I think once the certificate of occupancy is issued and he's starting his business, in all fairness, that's when the five-year period should start.
That seems reasonable.
Okay.
I think, also.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking the questions.
We don't, I, I, I think you get, sending us suggestions about all the potential things that we could have in there is better than limiting. It's better to have more options of what we can consider in the final.
I mean, I think he's offered quite a bit. At least, you know, we can start where, what he's offered. I don't know what, what we honestly, he could leave out, other than, I mean, he's not ingress. He graced on, on the Carolyn. He's coming from the highway, moved the dumpster away from residents. Put a buffer, he has a buffer home behind it.
You see.
He's doing a flood plane, a plan.
And, and that's, that's the kind of thing that, you know, usually to make sure it doesn't get changed, you just, you staple it to the agreement. Say, give me your site plan, and, you know, according to the site plan, you're going to do this.
And that, if it changes ownership.
Also, he's given us, he's given us extra parking for the, for the patrons that go there, but how many parking spots does he have for the employees, and that's, that's nothing we've got to look at.
And can, can the agreement is that he has to maintain a majority interest in the, in the property?
Who do, who has to maintain it? Marone?
The president, yeah.
Okay.
The owner.
All right, well, I'll send, I'll send around the original.
Why should that matter?
Yeah, I don't think that matters.
No, I don't.
Well, actually, they've, they've, they've said, they've said that it'll be binding on them and their successors in the science.
Right, the successors, right, exactly.
So, they're, they're cool with that. I'll send you the.
I would say have his attorney draft his covenants, what he suggested and what he's stating he's willing to do, send it to us, but I, again, the year of renovations, in my opinion, should not eat up as five years.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, got you. All right, that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Reports, chief?
Staff of Harahan Police Department for October 2017. Number calls to service was 664. We handled seven accidents, 54 citations issued for 86 charges. We had 28 narcotics arrests for 36 charges. We had 16 felony, 11 misdemeanor, non-sitting. We had 91 other arrests, 163 other charges, 11 felony, 110 misdemeanors, 17 sitting, 25 traffic.
Thank you.
Persons and property crimes. Zero murders, zero rapes, zero robberies, zero residential burglaries, zero non-residential burglaries, zero attempted burglaries, zero, uh, attempted motor vehicle theft, six larceny theft, and 18 assaults. Goes back to what Mr. Buddy said earlier, trust. I don't trust the mayor. I've met with her before, and I've heard the same song and dance over and over. But a lot of it goes back to 2016. Mayor brings in a finance director, again, budgeted $48,000 for the year, was paid over 140, almost 144,000. First time I and a majority of the council received the financial report was October of 2016. Then I went through July. So how can you, how can you run your department or run your house when you don't know what your financials are on a regular basis? The mayor believes that any money that's left in your account after December 31st, it's hers. So I was kept in the dark. Then the budget audit comes in by CRI, called Riggs Engram. They say we're $66,000 over budget. After we present documentation, oh, no, you, 91,000. Ms. Lulu says we're 75,000. We went back and went over it again. We think we could be as much as $200,000 under budget in 2016. We were promised that money would be given back to the police department. But then the auditor, because I filed a complaint against Ms. Lulu and one of the auditors with the licensing board for CPAs, say the least, they're not on their Christmas card list. So they let the audit go through with the legislative auditor that we're still $66,000 over budget, even though we have documentation from CRI saying we're 91 under, or Ms. Lulu saying we're 75,000 under. Going back to what I said before, how can we keep this auditing firm on for the 17 audit when we can't get straight figures, can't straight results, they won't talk to me, won't come and talk to the council at a council meeting? What do they have to hide? We're paying our tax dollars to do the audit for the city, and they don't want to comply. In the meantime, the police department gets deemed. We out there trying to protect you. We've bought a lot, we've cut back and lost a lot of resources as a result of that. I'll meet with you, Alms. You know, but just like I asked tonight, can we get an answer about changing over the router? So we can, we paying for it, the police department, for increased speed for the internet, can't get an answer. Three weeks we've been asking, three emails to the mayor, not even a response. Just tell me no. I'll go buy a router for the police department. We going to use, we need the, most of our stuff goes over the internet, so we need the speed to operate. And it goes on and on and on. No answer. We going to keep CRI for this year? No answer. It's constant.
I did give you an answer on that.
Pardon?
Thank you. I did give you an answer on that.
What's the answer? Yeah, you're going to continue to use them. Even though we have all these reasons that I've stated that they're not, I don't think it's good for the Harahan, City of Harahan to use them, but we still going to use them. Anyway, have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Chief, St. Seer.
Mayor, I have no report, but I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe and peaceful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, and I'm glad you located your missing child at the, not truly missed.
I have no comment.
Councilman Johnson?
Just the same, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Councilman Benton?
Um, I just want to encourage Mr. Buddy to please reconsider. You were, you were approved unanimously by this board, and we need your expertise and.
He's so interested.
And your, and your interest, yes, and everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
Councilman Wheeler?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate on Mr. Buddy's position on the Planning and Zoning Board. So, the mayor came to this council and asked us to give some nominations. I actually spoke to Mr. Buddy and pretty much begged and pleaded, because there wasn't many people that wanted to serve under currently the lights of what's going on, so I very much was appreciative that he was willing to. Mr. Buddy, I assure you that if I knew your position was only for eight months, I, I would have never asked you. It was never said to us, "Oh, by the way, this person you're putting up is only for eight months, or this person you're putting up is for six months, or by the way, hey, you got the luck of the draw, your person is for five years." I'd, I'd almost be inclined, with no disrespect to any members that have currently been elected to the board, it wouldn't surprise me if they took positions and they have five years. I really would like to know that. So please, I, I had never, and I'm sure you understand that we discussed this, I would have never asked you to serve if the position was only for eight months. I can tell you, when I was nominated to Planning and Zoning and took the position, I was under the impression, too, that it was five years. Now granted, maybe I took an open position, but again, why would we put people that are very valuable to the city for a short period of time? Yes, there is the option that you can get extended, and the likeliness of that probably would happen, but you don't know that. I don't know that. So you put all this time and effort and spend everything that you have with the chance in eight months, you may not be on the board. So I just want to let you know, I'd never, and I'm, I'm sure you understand that. Also, just want to remind people, too, about Father John Arnoni's benefit. He was a big asset to this, to St. Rita. You know, I'm sad that he's not here, of course. Somebody actually took a picture of a rainbow that was over the fair this past weekend, and that was just his thing. So it was pretty, so please, if y'all can come out and support, it'd be a great time. And yes, have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. I'll try and keep this sweet. I did email you. I have no intention of changing auditors. That is, we're staking with our auditor. At this point, I am going to be very happy to start building bridges. And, Mr. Gregory, thank you for your offer, and we'll address all these issues. I'd like to, also, if you'd like to have some time to look at the budget in depth and whatever you want in order to.
I'm no pro at any of that, but I'm just.
You don't need to be.
With your eyes.
I, I'm just, I'm just thankful, it's just another reason why Harahan's such a special place, and I'm thankful to be allowed to serve the public. And I'd like to just wish everyone a happy, healthy Thanksgiving. Embrace your family and friends. I'd like to thank our city attorney, who I think I might have guilted into coming tonight, so thank you. He doesn't feel very well. We can now pay the bills.
Bills paid in October. $328,690.3.
There's no executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, before we make a quick motion, I know the chief had gotten up and asked about some questions about his in-code access, the military overtime, and the exceptions of, he signs off on every other bill but except Bures and Lulu and CRI. You said you were going to address that. We don't need to go into it right now, but I would like those items put on the agenda for the December 7th meeting. I would like them addressed.
I've got you the military issue, something you're.
Well, thank you.
Can, can we?
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
But is, am I, I'm calling it now that these will be under the items under agenda for December 7th.
Under new business.
Under new business. It was the in-code access that the chief had asked about. I just wrote military overpay. I believe there was a gentleman, something about was paid and got overpaid. Okay? And then apparently about the exceptions of, that every other bill he signs off on, but the three. And again, I still go back, this should be a common best practice in any business, in any government. If you're a department head and you're responsible for your department, send me the invoice, let me sign off on it. And we don't have this discussion, and I don't understand why all the other invoices he signs off. No disrespect, but there's these three. So I could, I can sense his frustration. I sign off everything else. Why are these three excluded? So it's either all or none thing for me. I just think it's a way of best practices, and that way, if anybody says I didn't authorize it, there it is, and we can move on.
We are now adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
By Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Benton, all in favor.
Yay.
Go oppose.